All right, we'll call the council meeting in order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That sounded good. There was no echo coming from everybody on Zoom. Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Morissette?
Here.
Alm?
Here.
DeZiel?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Brock?
Here.
And Hall.
All right. First thing up, presentations, the 2021 PSC rate case update. Kip?
Good evening, everybody. Kip Peters, utility director. Me and Eric Granham, he should be on Zoom here tonight, so if we do have any questions on this, just here to give you guys an update on kind of where we're at. We did have the public hearing on the rate case on June 2nd. That was all via Zoom. We did not have any participants other than staff in that. So basically, after review of the water rates, application, and several data requests, the Public Service Commission made several adjustments to the data that was submitted in the original application filed October 28, 2019. Some of these were anticipated and incorporated into the rates presented to the council on June 15, 2020. Additional adjustments made by PSC staff resulted in an increase of the revenues to be collected in the rates and a reduction in the projected volume of sales. PSC adjusted residential water sales from 369,905 million cubic feet to 290 million cubic feet based on actual 2019 water sales. The reduced projected revenues at current rates by $123,755. The net assets of the utility is allowed to collect a return on investment for what, or was increased by about 1.1 million over the estimates based on 2019 construction costs. With authorized PSC benchmark rate of return at 4.9%, this had the effect of increasing the amount of return on investment that the utility collects through rates by $55,117. So that probably means a whole lot of nothing to everybody sitting here, but summary in total, the impact of the PSC adjustments increased the amount of the rate increase by $176,538 and resulted in an overall increase in rates of 17.2% compared to 10.7% that was estimated in June 2020. Roughly two-thirds of that difference was due to the decrease in water sales experienced in 2019, with the other third due to actual versus estimated investments in utility assets. So with that, there was a lot of information included in your packets. There was also some comparisons in there on where we are today and then where we would be with the projected PSC new rates that PSC is establishing. So I guess with that, I'll just turn it over to Eric if he's got anything to add or if you guys have any questions.
Sure, I can just make a couple statements here. You know, throughout the, we had that, as Kip said, the PSC hearing last week, PSC staff was in agreement with the rate structure we had proposed. And we had proposed a number of adjustments in how they allocate costs, but the part of the rate structure was to minimize the increase to the irrigation class, and they agreed with that. And then just, as Kip said, included, this came up in the PUC meeting, comparison of residential bills around the state, just to provide a little more context. Currently, Hudson has some of the lowest water rates in the state, so we're looking at, you know, these percentages, but even with those increases, you know, amongst, you know, all the class, the larger utilities in the state and your peer utilities and amongst the local, the regional utilities in St. Croix County, even with the increase, it'll still remain at fairly low rates, well below average and the bottom, amongst the bottom quarter of rates in the state. So that is, that is good news on that front. So yeah, with that, if there are any questions we can address, that would be great.
I've got questions, obviously, on the irrigation. That was the hot topic from constituents that I had. Reading the report, now, are you starting the baseline after the adjustment at $3.09, which would be an increase, or on the second report on your list, it goes down by a buck fifty-five?
So I'll let Eric take, I don't have the reports in front of me. I'm sure he has them right on his.
So on the consulting report, you got irrigation down nine, from nine dollars at the max hour to 7.45. So in layman's term, you and the gentleman, Eric, we really need to explain this in layman's terms so the general public knows what you, we are charging for irrigation and any other basic water consumption.
Eric, can you go through the irrigation?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll explain the adjustments and then show the rates, too. The adjustments we made were based on analysis of water sales and because part of how costs are allocated to different types of customers is based on how, how much they peak throughout the year. And prior to this, you know, prior to this, the information wasn't available. So it was just based on an assumption when these rates were established by PSC. And once we received, we're able to look at the actual data from the new meters, we were able to determine that the, most of the customer classes, but in particular the irrigation did not peak as high as was assumed. And so with that, we were able to minimize the increase to the irrigation. Would I be able to show my screen here just to show what I'm talking, talking about? Well, either way, we have the rates on, it's in the, it's in the packet.
Well, you got a couple different charges, a couple different prices on it. I want to know what the general public will see on their bill. I have a second meter for irrigation.
Yeah, what was, what's the percentage increase for irrigation? You know, could you just give us in general for your average residential home, what the, what the regular rate percentage increase would be? And then also then for irrigation, what that percentage increase is? I think that'd be the easiest comparables.
Sure.
Well, I don't know if percentages are a dollar amount.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, let me, let me get that.
Because I'm seeing two different charges on this consulting report.
Brian, can you let him share a screen?
The water rates, and just in general, they're made up of a number of components. One, one of those components is the public fire protection charge, and that constitutes a large part of this increase, and irrigation customers are not charged the public fire protection charge. So that's one thing.
Was it, was it the floor?
Kip? I'm sorry.
Was the fire charge, charge irrigation? Was, no?
No, never has been.
All right.
But what he said, what, I guess what he's saying is, is when we started the irrigation rate in 2019, there was a lot of assumptions made because we didn't have any information.
Yeah.
Now we have all that information, so now we can accurately tell how much water is actually being used, irrigation and things like that.
And so what are, what are we as taxpayers paying for that? $3.09?
Can we let Eric share a screen?
Yeah, I think I cannot. Yeah, no, I can.
Yes, I have been able to.
Okay, so this, this table shows all the different components. There's a service charge by meter size, a service charge for the irrigation meters, which is the same amount. And the public fire protection charge, which is also by meter size, and then the per volume water rates. So for the residential is seeing, you know, a big share of the increase, and a lot of that is due to the public fire protection charge, which is going up about 44, 45% across the board for all meter sizes. And again, irrigation customers are not charged that charge. The irrigation rate is increasing from the 285 to 309 or 8.4%.
When you started, Kip, you said it was going down.
We never said it would, that would go down.
Pardon?
We never said it would go down. We didn't know.
No, when you first stood up tonight, you said it went down. Did I not hear that right?
No.
No, we were thinking to minimize.
It went up from the, our, what we sold went down.
Yeah.
The amount of volume went down.
Volume, yeah, not our percentages.
Yeah. We're still, we're raising the increase on irrigation.
Yes, the 8.4.
We knew that there would, even when we had the initial proposal last, whenever we talked about this, whatever that was, we knew irrigation was going to have to go up some, but the goal was to minimize. We knew rates were going to go up.
Right.
So the goal was to try to spread that out in a way where it's not all the irrigation. Because last time, the huge increase was irrigation.
Yeah, and we got a lot of feedback.
It was, I don't even know what, I mean, it was like in the 30% or, I mean, it was a huge increase to irrigation last time. It was, that was the big sticker shock. So this time, we knew that we're going to have an increase. We assumed that like the overall cumulative increase was like about 10%, I think. And that was, if you average it all together. Now, what we talked about was when you went to PFC, what Eric was trying to explain is that they, in fact, they gave us other numbers that we had to use, so that increase went up to, was like 17 overall?
Seventeen, yep.
Seventeen overall. But, so what you're seeing though is irrigation's about 8.4. The commercials, about one and a half, maybe, something like that.
Right, all the non-residential are as minimal, minimal increase.
The commercial is fairly minimal. The residential is the biggest one. And what was that? Eric, can you scroll back up to that? That's about the 18.
Eighteen, yep.
So that's about 18% for the residential.
Why is it that way? Why shouldn't it be the other way around?
You mean, commercial paying more than, than the residential?
Right, and that was, again, that was based on that meter data analysis. We looked at all the different classes with the data that was available, and what we see is that the non-residential customers, they use, you know, a consistent amount of water throughout the year, right? They don't generally, as a, as a class, peak a lot in the summer or, or on certain days or certain hours. So what the results were showing that they, those rates should not be increased very much.
So the rate increase is really being driven by that public fire protection. Is that right?
Much, yeah, like, I'm pretty sure the increase is in the public fire protection.
Can you explain what that is?
Sure, that, it represents the, basically the cost to provide all the infrastructure to fight fires in the city, right? So it's, at the base level, it's your, you know, cost to construct and maintain all your hydrants, but also a share of your towers to provide pressure and a share of your wells just to provide the water itself. And because these prior assumptions had the customer classes, like they assumed all these were so peaky, and we were able to determine that they were not, that's what shifted a big share onto the public fire protection because the city has to provide, you know, enough, the water at certain pressure and the infrastructure to fight fires when it's necessary.
So you're telling me some of these factories are using less water than the city when they're, that's what they use to cool the products, to store things. I don't agree with it.
Yeah.
And I don't agree with this rate.
Well, that's what our, that's what our meter, when we, when we changed, when we went to the new meter system, that, we can track exactly what's being used now, where before we never could. It was, we were assuming.
Are we 100% now on meter changeout?
I think we've got maybe 40 left, so 99%.
It's bad timing. I don't think there's good time to raise taxes because that's kind of what we're doing, is charging for water use.
Correct.
And I don't agree with it.
And I think one thing everybody needs to remember is that the city doesn't set water rates. The PSC sets our water rates. All we do is supplying the data.
That's just reality. We get the cost.
I understand. Yep. We just want to make sure it's clear, though, that, you know, the only thing the city controls is, you know, basically the budget for it, though. I mean, we do show the expenditures in the projects, but we've had a fairly large amount of needed projects that have been done on the water side over the last, how many years, Kip, have we been playing catch-up on infrastructure? So, I mean, all things considered, you have to replace infrastructure at some point. We've been doing that. COVID threw everybody for a loop as far as a good time to be able to do things, but those projects were all basically underway before any of that happened. We haven't really started any new projects on the water side that we're including in this except for 35 now, which is, you know, a state project that we have to participate in to update our infrastructure underneath their road.
So these, that their home associations now are going to get charged $3.09 per cubic foot of water or however, a gallon or whatever you measure it by?
I believe that's per, is that per hundred, Eric, right?
Per hundred cubic feet, yep.
So an average residential property would, what, average for irrigation?
I, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I don't have that information, like, really able to pull up here.
And then the peak charge, the max you'll charge is nine bucks is what you're asking us to charge?
Nine dollars, no, I, I don't know where that's.
7.45. Your previous max hour extra capacity ratio on irrigation was $9. Your proposed max hour extra capacity ratio is now 7, 7.75 or 7.45.
Yeah, that's not, that's not dollars. That's just the, the ratio of peak water sales to average water sales. That's what we were proposing to the PSC that was accepted. That's just, that's not a, that's not a dollar. That's just a, a ratio of.
I think the safest way to assume it would be, you know, if you are a homeowners association, look at your bill last year. If you assume you're going to have the same usage this year at 8%, and that's what your bill is going to be.
Right. All, all usage on that irrigation rate is that 3.09.
That's the safest way to assume it, is add 8% to your bill.
That's terrible.
That's on the irrigation side. On your residential side, if you look at your, your bill, let's be at 18%. Look at your water share, 18%. Look at your water share of your bill and add 18%. If you assume you're going to use the same amount of water and that's what it'll be the, you know, be the coming year. Randy, you're 100% right. There's never a good time to do utility rate increases. We get it. This has been kind of delayed for a while anyways.
This was a mandate in 2019.
Right, we had to do it. This wasn't a voluntary thing the city did. The PSC said it's, we have to, you know, do another rate adjustment and take a look at it. And like I said, this is, they tell us what numbers to use, and this is what they're, they're coming back with the rates. But again, you know, the bottom line is, is that our utilities are enterprise funds. They need to be self-supporting.
Time to run for higher office now.
They need to be self-supporting. So this is what gets us to self-supporting. And, you know, unfortunately it is, but the good news is, is that when you look at it and you can look at the charts that are in there, we are still on the lowest end in the county in our, in the state, statewide for population and statewide for the class of water that we, water plant, is that what you call it?
That we have.
System that we have.
They're divided up by customers.
So we're either at the very bottom still, or at least we're in the bottom quarter, depending on how you look at it. And, you know, if you look at the county comparison, we're at the very bottom, just right above River Falls. But if you look at the other ones, we're still either at the very bottom or at least in the bottom quarter. You know, and it's, I, like I said, nobody disagrees more, agrees with you more that it's never a good time to raise rates, especially now.
Where do we direct all the calls for the questions?
Well, send them Kip's way and he's happy to answer.
I mean, it's ridiculous. And I get it, I get it.
Yep, and like I said, and all we can do is just explain that, you know, it's, we have, it's a mandatory thing that the state requires us to do. We did it. We provided the information. Understand that increases are never easy, but we're also still in the lower portion, and that's because the council has done at least, you know, a very good job over the years of controlling the expenditures as best as possible. You know, you have, you have to operate your water system. You have to improve your water system. Those things all cost money. The council has done a very good job over the years in controlling that still, but you still are going to see increases as these projects come in, and that's kind of where we're at with some of these.
When will this rate, these increases go into effect?
They're taking public comments until tomorrow yet. Like I said, we had the, we had the public comment period on June 2nd, I believe it was last Wednesday. They're taking them until tomorrow yet. Once that happens, it'll go to the PSC board, I believe, for approval, which isn't going to take long. The judge will sign off on it and they will set a date. Now, we can be a little flexible in when we want that implemented. We can ask, I know in the last rate case, we asked for, I think it was an additional three months. We had some stuff to work out type thing. Normally, we like to start anything like this on a new billing cycle. It's, just makes sense. We can read everything out. The new rates get implemented and then, you know, you start off your new billing cycle. So our new billing cycle would be in July.
Kip, two questions for you. If people do want to reach out, make a public comment by tomorrow, how, one, how do they do that?
PSC online.
Okay. And then two, I'm just going to write that, PSC online. How do you plan to communicate this rate increase to our residents?
We haven't planned anything. I mean, maybe this is a great thing for the new flyer that we're doing.
So I think what we'll, we'll end up doing is, once we get the exact rates from the PSC, we know it's approved and the date will go into effect. We'll try to do what we usually do. We'll post it on the website, put it out to the social media. We'll share with the council so you can share with your constituents directly, any way that you can. And then, you know, we'll, we'll reach out the best way we can that way, but most people won't notice until they get their bill.
So with the opportunity for folks to public comment through tomorrow, how have they been communicated that?
Well, it's, it's, the state.
It's on our, it's on our, it was on our website, and there is a public notification. It's just like every other public, public notified meeting where we had to post it in the newspaper and.
It was published and things, but the reality of it is, is that they'll take comment, but, I mean, if the comments are just, we can't have a utility rate increase, you know, it's got to be, for something to be different, it has to be something substantial that we've missed or, you know, something that someone knows they're aware of that are, that we missed in our, we should have provided, you know, things like that. It, just the fact that the utility rates are going up is not, even if you had every citizen in the city say, we don't want our utility rates to go up, the PSC is still going to increase the rates or whatever amount they feel is necessary for us to operate.
Got it. Thank you.
And Kip, one last question. Is it, the water usage has gone down mostly from irrigation. Is that correct?
I don't know. Eric, do you have that, where the breakdown?
The residential water sales are the biggest one that went down.
Through volume?
Through volume, yeah.
And through sales.
That's amazing.
Data residential use, okay, see that in there?
What year is that based off of?
2019. Goes up through 120, 126, 2020. So this is all pre-COVID data, correct?
Yes.
Yep. So do we know anything about why? I'm curious as to why it would have dropped off that much. I see the irrigation is down somewhat, too, in this other graph here, so. But do we have any sense of, we don't have any sense of why?
No.
Okay, interesting.
Well, it'll actually be interesting to see now, our next round, when post-COVID, because I think we'll see a pretty dramatic increase during COVID, everybody home.
Right.
You know, kids are home, nobody's showering after sports, they're showering at home, you know, that sort of thing. So I think actually for, you know, 2020 to 2020, 21, when we get that data, we'll probably see the water usage back up, which again, will go into effect, go into play when we do our next round of utility rate review with the PSC, is they'll look at the usage and it's gone up and, you know, we'll see how that affects rates.
Is that a yearly thing or every two years when we do that?
No, it's, this one, we were required, in 2019, PSC required us to come back in.
Okay.
From our 2016 rate case. You don't have to do a rate case, I mean, the city of Hudson didn't do one for 22 years.
Okay.
So you don't have to do them, you're not mandated to do them at any, on any timeframe. Most communities will do, you know, what, what we call a full rate case, which is what we're doing today. But then you can also do a simplified rate case, which is, they can allow you up to a 3% bump just right off the top. It's a couple pages, you fill it out. I believe it's every 12 months. You can, you can apply for that, so.
The issue is, the longer you wait, though, more likely the larger your increase is going to have to be at that time. So it looks great for five years, six years, you're keeping your rate steady. All of a sudden, you do that rate case in the seventh year, you're seeing a 25% increase. Where if you would have done nice incremental ones, which is pretty much what everybody expects with costs going up and things like that, you don't see that big hard-hit impact. So it's, it's better to do them on a little more regular basis probably than what we've done historically.
So is the thought that the 18% and 8% for residential irrigations, is the thought that that will stabilize for a while, or are we sort of like, we don't know in two years what it will look like?
Financially?
Just in terms of the rates and usage?
Well, all of this information that, that is being used is based off of 2019. So we're already a year and a half behind on that. That's just how, that's just how they do it.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's basically off of a test year, they call it.
Got it.
So everything's off of 2019. So, you know, where we're at today is different than where we were in 2019.
But we expect that this rate increase, and also the one that came, when that last one was 2016 or whatever, which is a big jump, that irrigation and all that stuff that really got affected. We expect that this will definitely stabilize. Finances, we're, you know, we're hoping that for at least a few years, we're not touching this.
Okay.
So was our last increase in 2016 then? So we, we have not had an increase since then?
Yes.
Yep. And we're thinking that this will be, stabilize us for another few years or so until we have to do it again.
Or at least with a 3%, we can get by with a simplified rate case.
And we'll just reexamine it basically on a yearly basis to see if we need to submit for that or not.
Okay. How much of this includes future planning? As we know down the road?
You can't, they, they will not allow you to, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Eric, but again, they use a 2019 test year. So we can't, we can't put in our rates something that might happen in three years. You know, okay, we need to build, we need to build a well in three years. We can't put that in there. It's just the current year and where you're at in that current year and what, what deficit you're at in that current year. So we can't build in. So, you know, if we do need to build a well, for example, in the, in the next two or three years, we'd be looking at a rate increase at that point, or at least, or at least looking at it again. Yeah, they won't allow any future maybes.
So we end up borrowing the money, then we can't, we can't build.
We have to debt, issue debt to do it.
It's too bad.
Correct.
Because we know.
Yep.
If irrigation usage does not come back up, does that mean the rate will need to increase? For irrigation?
You know, we had, what, I know one, one of your concerns was the irrigation rate. So that's why, you know, that's why we hired Trilogy to put this together so we could adjust and manipulate. You know, we, we knew overall what we needed for an increase, but how do we get to that increase? Or how do we get there? So that's why when we hired Trilogy, it was their job to look and see, you know, where can we maneuver this so we don't have such an increase in irrigation? Will you see it come down? I don't know, you know. It, you know, and the thing is with irrigation, it depends on the, on the year. I mean, I'm driving here today. Literally, I seen four houses from my office to here, irrigation's running like crazy, all over their yard. I mean, it's 95 degrees out in the sunshine and they're irrigating right now, so.
And to qualify that, that's with, with homes with second meters that are looking at irrigation?
Yes.
Has there been any difference there that you can drill down to for homes that may be circumventing that second meter?
No, our, in terms of stealing? Is that where you're going?
In terms of circumventing. I mean, I, I hear that there's less usage. I don't know that that's really COVID. That'd be more weather related, but I irrigated just as much as I did in previous years.
Our current meters that, like I said, are probably 99% installed in the city of Hudson. They're, they're what we call tamper-proof. So we know when they're not working almost instantly. We know if they've been, you know, if they've been taken apart, things of that nature. Just the software that's in them now, we can, we can tell. You know, we can tell leaks, for example. You know, a toilet starts leaking, we, we get a report that's, you know, hey, you know, this home was using. this home was using water at three o'clock in the morning. They used a bunch of water at three o'clock in the morning and it's still continuing. Why? So then my staff will actually go out and knock on the door and, you know, things like that, so.
Thank you.
Theft, no. I mean, they could, you can, but I don't see it rampant or
Okay.
An issue.
Anybody else? Thanks, Kip.
All right.
Thank you, Eric. All right, citizen comments. This is your opportunity for anybody that is here in person or on Zoom to make comments on anything that is not on the agenda. Again, please keep it brief and please try not to repeat anything that other people are saying. For those people that are on Zoom, please remember we can't see you here. So you don't have to get my attention in order to be called upon. Please just break in whenever you hear a break. Unmute yourself.
I think Zoom crashed, so. So if you're not here.
I've still got it.
Oh, mine crashed on my laptop, so I don't know what happened.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened, but.
Oh, there it is.
Glad we're back.
Okay.
All right, so we had a temporary glitch here. I'm not sure what people heard, but I'll start over again. It's citizen comments. If, if you have a comment, please keep it brief. Please try not to repeat something that someone else has said. If you are on Zoom, please unmute yourself and just break in whenever there is a lull in discussion. And I think also that there is a way to raise your hand that our Brian, our IT guy, will be able to see and, and unmute you as well. So, does anybody have, oh, by the way, citizen comments are not allowed on anything that is, that is on the agenda. So potentially we can take that up as the agenda item comes up. Is there anybody that has a comment? Yes. If you would, please identify yourself and your address.
I'm Beth Weiskopf. I live at twenty-four oh eight Donegal Way. I'm here tonight to speak about making the city of Hudson a Second Amendment sanctuary city and request it to be added to the agenda for a future meeting. I sent a request to my district councilman Joyce Hall, asking her to add this to an agenda item at a future council meeting. She responded that she does not support this as there are already laws protecting gun owners. So I am here asking if one of the other councilmen would request that this be added to a future agenda meeting. I and some others are working to get the Sanctuary County Board of Supervisors to pass an ordinance to make Sanctuary County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. To do this, we're going to the cities and townships in Sanctuary County and asking them to make their cities and townships Second Amendment sanctuaries. We will then take those past ordinances to Sanctuary County in support. While it's true there are laws currently, especially the Second Amendment of the Constitution, we have all seen in the past and currently that there are some who want to change them, restrict them, and take away our Second Amendment constitutional rights. The right to keep and bear arms is a fundamental individual right that shall not be infringed. And all local, state, federal acts, laws, orders, rules of regulations regarding firearms, firearm accessories and ammunition that infringe on those rights are a violation of our Second Amendment. Local governments have the legal authority to refuse to cooperate with state and federal firearm laws that violate those rights and to proclaim a Second Amendment sanctuary for law-abiding citizens and their cities and counties. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any other comments? Any other comments?
Uh, Zoom, Brian. Okay, there we go.
Can you hear me?
Chris, yep.
Okay, I can barely hear you for some reason. I'm Kristen Emerson from Hudson, Wisconsin, and I just wanted to make a quick comment about, I saw a city with pride flags all along their main street and I thought it was very pretty and I thought it was very inclusive and I thought that might be something wonderful that we could see in downtown, downtown Hudson. Pride flags just along their lampposts, so thank you for the consideration.
Okay. You through, Chris? Chris? I'm sorry, I couldn't tell if you're done. All right, um, thank you, Chris. Are there any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of five hundred fourteen thousand nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. Approve secondhand article dealer mall flea market license. Approve taxi license and taxi cab drivers listed on the list sheet. Approve amusement device owner's license listed on the list sheet. Approve the operator's license listed on the list sheet. Approve the annual renewal of alcohol license application listed for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Approve the purchase of high-risk medical bags for the squad cars. Approve the purchase of additional police boat equipment. Approve the change of agent listed on the list sheet. Discussion on possible action to approve the request by Girl Scout troop number five seven eight three nine to install a mobile phone selfie stand at Lakefront Park. And discussion on possible action to approve the request for the YMCA to install an on locket program in Lakefront Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call.
Morrisette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Discussion of possible action on changing community events to licensed events and adopt ordinance twelve dash twenty-one, amending municipal code chapter two five five dash seventeen point one zero, downtown overlay district. Design review and ordinance thirteen dash twenty-one, amending municipal code chapter one twenty-four dash two, one twenty-four dash four, one twenty-four dash five, and one twenty-five dash ten, direct sellers, transient merchants, and solicitors.
This was brought up at a, a previous meeting where we're approving community events because our current ordinance only will allow things like sales in our parks, you know, food vendors, sales of items and things like that for what our past term was community events. And the issue that was raised was is that some of these community events are religious based, hosted by churches, things like that. And to be clear that it's not a city-sponsored event, we just adjusted the wording to change it from community events to licensed events. Nothing else changes other than that term, which I think eliminates that perception that the city is sponsoring it, other than we're just licensing it and allowing it to occur.
Oh, move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion, second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morrisette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt. I'm sorry, I don't have the ordinance number.
Twelve twenty-one.
Twelve dash twenty-one.
And
Second.
Is it also thirteen dash twenty-one?
There's two of them, yeah. Twelve and thirteen.
Do I do them one at a time though?
No.
Oh, sorry. Then I will take thirteen dash twenty-one as well.
All right.
I'll second that as well.
All right, so we have a motion, a second to adopt. Any discussion?
I want to thank Jim Weber for bringing this to the forefront. That's a really important distinction with the city and I thank you for catching it at that other meeting, so.
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Seven B Diversity Committee discussion.
I'll start and Paul can jump in too, I think. So at the last meeting, we had a conversation about this and how to move forward. Council members DeZiel, Hall, and Alms had volunteered to take a look at some other community ordinances, things like that, and, and try to see if we have something that we could start conversations with. Council member DeZiel put together the committee draft charter that is there. And I think, you know, from here, we want to discuss how do we want to, you know, kind of proceed to next steps. The, the realistic next steps if the council wants to do this is, is basically probably an ordinance update that would identify a diversity committee, what it looks like, similar to what we did with our downtown parking utility commission in their establishment. It would basically lay out in detail, you know, what, what the committee looks like, makeup, how it's, how it's created, what its, what its function is, things like that. And then usually along with that, there's a, you know, probably some sort of city policy as well or something that's a guiding document with it. So I guess, you know, I don't know, Paul, if you have anything else you want to kind of add to this, but it's, it's kind of our starting point of where do we want to kind of go from here with it?
Yeah, for sure. Thanks, Aaron. I guess, two things. One is just, I really believe in open government. So the intent I bring tonight is a draft and I understand it as a draft. And so I want you to know, and the public to know, I'm not wedded to the language in here. What I want to do is start a discussion and get all the council people to really make this a whole lot better. So I don't see this at all as a finished product. I see this as the first step of starting a very important discussion in our community and in our council. Oh, the second thing was just that a lot of other cities are, are doing this. I know Aaron had sent out some information on, I think, Red Wing. Help me with the cities. I know Woodbury's done some things like this.
There's some in California. There was Red Wing. I think White Bear Lake might have been one of them. Marshall, Minnesota was another one. So there's, yeah, there's a number in our area.
So that's, that's, uh, it's kind of a growing trend. And I think as we think about our city continuing to grow and our city continuing to grow in terms of diversity, I see this as a real asset, as a, as a long-term asset to really help council, help city staff, help make our community better. So I think it's just a win-win all the way around. I do think there's also a lot of grant money that we're leaving on the table right now because we don't have something like this in place. And so I see this as a really great way that the city can say, let's, uh, let's get some initiatives going in whatever form that's going to look like. And I think there's a real potential to fund that. And the other thing I think it could really do for our, us is it could really put us on the map in terms of being a really welcoming community that I think would draw from the Twin Cities and other areas for our businesses, for our hospitality sector. I just see so many upsides to this. I don't, again, I'm not married to the language in it. I'm not married to, to the title in it. So I want to just put forward this as a, as a, as an initial starting point. And, and more I'm curious tonight is just the thoughts around the table, questions, comments. So thank you for looking at it and thank you for engaging in it.
Anybody?
I have some, some issues with some of the language, but we can discuss that at a different time. I'd like to know what you found out, Bill, if you found any other comparable cities in Wisconsin. In Wisconsin, I've done this.
I have not, but I have done that research to qualify that.
Okay.
Do you know of any, Aaron?
I'll, I'd have to look more. I mean, I know there's a number of the larger cities that have, have something in place already. A lot of them are, they're morphing a little bit from what used to be human rights commissions into broadening their kind of scope and things. That's what I've seen more is that human rights commission side that is now maybe focusing more on the diversity side and things like that. So I'd have to do more research on the Wisconsin ones for sure, though.
Paul, do you have any examples of what type of agenda items would be on?
Yeah, so if you go down to the proposal, there's a mission statement I sort of laid out. The mission would be to ensure the city is an open, inclusive, and diverse place to live and work. The committee advocates for racial, ethnic, and ability equity and fosters cultural awareness and understanding. So that's the big picture. Then as far as getting into sort of some of the agenda items, the vision and goals would be the diversity committee would be charged by the common council to meet monthly. They would use parliamentary procedures similar to other cities and boards and committees. They would make recommendations and initiatives that would be brought to common council for final approval. So they're not, they're not running amok. They're not doing stuff on their own, right? They're working with common council. And then some of the things I thought were, one, creating city initiatives to promote more welcoming, inclusive climate for our residents, businesses, and visitors. Two, providing advice on training and support for city staff on cultural or ability awareness and best practices for cultural engagement. Three, initiatives to increase and celebrate cultural awareness and abilities in our city. Four, researching grants. This was a part I was talking about. We're leaving a lot of money on the table right now. Researching grants for other resources to help fund our initiatives. Five, reviewing maybe complaints or concerns regarding inclusion or equity from community members. Six, providing advice and feedback on the comprehensive plan. That's a long-range plan, so I just think we really need that input. Seven, adding as a resource for policy. So I see this as, so I'm on the park board, for example. And I, and the park board might say, if we have a diversity committee that's up and running, we might say, hey, can you guys, can you guys visit our parks? And can you tell us from a standpoint of abilities, maybe what we're missing? And they might say, well, you're missing picnic tables that are not wheelchair accessible. And I would be like, that's really good advice because that's not, that's nothing I've thought of. So I think they would be a resource for any acting committee like Public Works, Public Safety Plan, Parks. Just, just a really good resource. And then I think there's other goals that they maybe would come up with. So again, this is just the starting list here because I think I'm trying to rely on you guys for some input to help this become much better. I, I'm not pretending, I'm not going to pretend I have all the answers on diversity, certainly. But I'm pretty committed to making sure we do something moving forward, but I need your help, basically. So even Randy, as you say, you have difficulty with language issues. I would love to hear that tonight so we can kind of start working through this.
Well, yeah, I don't like seven, the one you just reiterated. I mean, we're appointed to do our job as elected officials.
Could I just bring up one thing? I mean, generally when you're doing something like this, it's not that you can't do it in this setting, but usually we do break it out into a smaller subgroup to deal with and then bring back something to the full council. So, because this is a good start, but there's so many details that need to get filled in. Do you want to email? So I guess what I would say is, is that if there's general comment, I think that's probably a good idea. But as far as a detailed comment, my recommendation would be is that we've already had council members DeZiel, Alms, and, and Hall who couldn't make it tonight, that are kind of on this little group that have been kind of looking at it. Would it be acceptable to kind of make them sort of the city's official subcommittee to look at a, some sort of diversity committee, whatever, something like that? And I can work with them to actually put together a draft ordinance, a mission statement, some sort of, if necessary, related policy, application process, all those sort of things to bring back to the full council for at least then you're discussing something more concrete. So we're not saying, well, in general, we should do this. We'll actually look at the details and, and that's where you can say, I don't like this section or where is this section? And then we can kind of build it out from there. Because we do have a whole lot more, I think, that we could do with it. And that way, if it's an official subcommittee and then you know that you've got the direction from the council, let's proceed to do something with this.
That's good. My only difficulty with that is open meeting law. Again, I'm really nervous about that. And so I don't think it can be three people from the council because we, if we show up and somebody's gone, you've, you've already violated open meeting law, so.
No, it's, it's not a quorum, though. Three is acceptable.
Not if we bring something to council, maybe for possible vote, and then that somebody is, is missing, then you've got three. So you're in violation. So I guess what I'm sort of saying is, because you can't, you can't work something behind the scenes to, to try to, that's the whole point of open meeting law.
I understand your, your concern though about
My concern is if three council people are working on one document at the same time that they bring to a future council meeting and only five members are there and those three people vote for the document they created, they've violated Wisconsin open meeting law.
They haven't. They have not.
No, why? Because they, because when you, well, who gets to answer this one? So when you did it, you weren't in violation. Your committee's not in violation. Just because, you know, you worked on it in a, in a subcommittee. When it comes to the council, the quorum issue isn't there because you're not actually making decisions in that subcommittee. The decision's made in a situation where the quorum is present.
Yeah, think, think about it this way. So for any subset of the council to get together, if four people get together, you have a quorum of the council and you have to notice that it's a public meeting. If you have three, you don't. So as Aaron said, it's the, the evaluation of whether it's a public meeting and whether it has to be noticed is based upon the number of council members attending at the time. So it's that meeting. It's not, if it were three of, of five, because only five show up at a future council meeting, that's not how you're evaluating it. So three's okay for, for a particular working group. But if it gets to four, then you have to notice it and then you have to follow all the open
But to address that for you, what if we, what if we publicly, what if we notice them? Whenever our committee gets together, even though it's not a quorum, we notice it.
I would feel better.
And the public can watch and you can, as a, whoever you decide is the chair, probably you, can decide if you want comment at that meeting and things like that, even though, you know, you don't have to. But that way, none of this will be done, you know, behind closed doors. Obviously, I'm going to email the group things to Obviously, I'm going to email the group things to consider beforehand, but the actual meeting where we discuss and decide things, we can easily post it. We can Zoom it. You know, it's a, it's not something that's a problem.
But isn't it true that if you came back and like, say, one person was gone, you couldn't vote on that at that meeting? Because that would be in violation, I think, of open meeting.
No, you can vote on it. At the council meeting where there are only five?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can absolutely vote on it.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
I think the concern has been, what's always been called the walking quorum, is that if one of those three people talked to a fourth person, then you've created the walking quorum. So that's the...
Only if you function as a walking quorum. So the concern with walking quarums and serialized meeting is that, meetings is that, you know, Paul will call Bill, who will call Randy, who will call Sarah, who will call Jim. And even though we're not all in the same place at the same time, you're having the same discussion on that topic. That's what we need to refrain from. The walking quorum, you know, would be that two of you get together and have a conversation, and then you transmit that information to the other, to another two. And then all of a sudden, you've had conversations outside of a public setting that's amounted to a quorum, but it's outside of a public meeting. So, you know, oftentimes, if you have an event where a quorum of council members may show up, may participate in different ways, it just gets posted to say that a quorum of the council of the body may be in attendance.
We've done that, I can't remember what events recently, but anytime there's an event in the community where I think the council members will have a quorum showing up, we will post it that way. We will say no city business will be conducted, but there's a potential for a quorum to be present.
But I think to clarify in this situation, though, what I would say is that there's no reason to do this behind closed doors. You know, so if you want, if the council decides they want to, you know, let this committee stand as a committee to help develop this, we can post those meetings and Zoom them, and, you know, that would be great. You know, I have no problem with that. You know, it's just a conversation that you're having about how you develop this. And it's probably a good way to get some input on the process, too, you know, while you're doing it.
Sure.
So I have a question. So if we move with the three, and if I have some comments and things I've noticed, and we're not going to discuss it here, can I go and share those comments then with those, or is with...
Well, my preference would be you share them tonight, because this is a forum where we can share anything in terms of this issue. So I would like to take some notes and bring that back to that group.
And then after that point, as the process goes on, you can share things with me, and I can share back out. But the intent would be is that as this committee develops things, it's going to come back to the full council for that open discussion.
Correct.
Feedback, let it develop as it goes, sort of thing.
Perfect.
Wasn't there a, I can't pull, I can't pull the documents up now. But wasn't there a reference to training and education by the municipality, Wisconsin municipality of whatever we are?
Yeah. So that was part of what I had said is just, I was hoping that, we talked about, we're not going to actually approve any ordinance or anything tonight. Because what I was saying was, is the league is offering training for city staff about this issue. And I'm not exactly sure what that's going to be, but I think it may help guide our final document. So I had just asked, don't approve anything before that. And that's the end of this month, and we won't, I don't think, have anything ready for that by that time.
So we will be doing that training?
Oh, yeah, I'll be taking that training.
Excellent.
Possibly other staff, too.
Will it be, well, will it be open to everybody? And I imagine at that training, you'll find other cities in Wisconsin.
Yep, that's the part of it, too. So no, the training is actually only for city staff representatives.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Will be, there are other people from the city in addition to you taking it?
Yes, I think we'll at least have one other person attend that training, too. And then the goal with that is, is that we will make connections with other cities who's doing this. And that'll be helpful, I think, as well, to kind of guide that. So that was the only reference I had there, is I'd like to wait until at least after that training, the end of this month, to help get some more insight.
But we can keep moving forward.
We don't have to stop everything until then, though.
All right.
We keep the process moving and get that draft ordinance going and things, so.
I would love to hear your thoughts, if you have any.
Do we need a motion to move this forward?
Well, I think at this point, if Sarah has some thoughts she'd like to share, but then, yeah, I think, once that's done, I think the motion would be is if you are okay setting that subcommittee to proceed.
This is on the agenda as discussion only.
Yeah, it's discussion only.
But we more or less set that up at the last...
We did, yeah.
We appointed the three members at the last meeting.
Very informally, though.
The lack of the addition of action is me getting used to that. I actually have to type in discussion and possible action on these things now, because it used to just be with our new system. The old system, Becky took care of all that for me. And now I actually have to do it myself, and I forget sometimes I have to add that word. So I apologize. That's on me.
I don't know that that's a problem here. I think that, I don't think that you need to wait until the 21st. I think that, you know, the core group has been set. I don't think anybody's going to have a problem with that. So.
Hi.
Okay.
Some areas that I would just encourage us to consider is, under point one, the committee mission. I would like, I would encourage us to include religious and sexual orientation to those, the groups that we will be advocating for. So that's one thing. And then where it talks about how the common council will review and choose commission members, I guess I'd like some more details. An idea I had was that maybe each alderperson would review applications from their district and choose two, and then perhaps our mayor could be, make the final decision on that. Those were the things that I saw on my initial read. So I really appreciate you doing this and the three of you working on this, and I'm super excited and feel that this is really important. And I want to make sure we keep moving it forward.
Thank you.
The only other comment I have besides, I don't care for number seven on your, on your section two, is that in your number three, under your membership, you're asking for people strongly connected, invested in Hudson. I think that in itself is contradicting this whole process. Should be open to anybody, not people who are just strongly invested.
Oh, I see. What I was, thank you for saying that. What I was trying to do is distinguish, some of the cities say you have to be a resident of the city, and then other people say, no, you could be like a business owner or somebody who's invested in the community. So I was trying to actually draw that bigger, and maybe the language is not right on that, Randy. But the idea was anybody who's interested, who's connected to Hudson. And that's kind of what I'm trying to get at. There's a connection to Hudson. Whether they're a business owner, whether they're a...
I think just any resident should be able to, our inclusive is what you're trying to do here.
Correct.
Anybody should be able to be.
A resident of the city?
Well, I don't want somebody from like Minneapolis who has no connection.
That's what I'm saying, Hudson.
That's what I'm saying.
But you're saying people strongly connected and invested. Well, who cares if somebody on Fourth Street wants to join the committee?
I think you just need to be clear, residents and business owners.
I think we can figure that out.
Yeah, yeah. What I'm trying, I think we're on the same page. It's just that the language isn't ringing. Yeah, we're trying to say the same thing.
Okay, we good?
Jim, did you have any insights that I could bring to that subcommittee?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I read through it. It's good work. We're moving in the right direction. And I'm glad we're going to get some exposure to what else is going on in Wisconsin. And the staff is getting some support, because I was concerned about that, as to, this is a new area.
Me, too. I want to make sure I do it right as well, and that's why I want to make sure I know what I'm doing more.
Very good.
So to clarify, we cannot meet as a subcommittee until we get...
No, you're fine.
Okay.
I think that was kind of determined, that the council is not opposing to that. And it was, would have been approved tonight if I would have put the right wording on the agenda. So that's on me.
No, actually, it's on me. I just asked for a discussion. Because sometimes I think discussions can be helpful, because there's no pressure to vote on anything. So all I was looking for is just, what are you thinking? So it's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thanks, Paul. Discussion possible action on the continuation of Zoom council meetings.
So we had the initial conversation last time. We just said when everybody's ready to be back. And I think the council member Hall is absent tonight, but if she was able to attend, she would be here in person. And so it looks like everybody's kind of happy to be back in the same room, and I think that's a positive for us. So then the question, though, that last time was brought up a little bit, was is, do we still continue to offer Zoom if all the council members are here? Is that still something necessary? Now, my recommendation, I guess, on it is that, from the staff's side, I would like to have it as an option for staff that aren't able to attend or consultants. Because a lot of times when our consultants come in and drive in, we pay for them to drive here. And we pay for them to sit here and wait, and then we pay for them to drive home. Where if we have a Zoom option for them, like tonight with Eric, he's on for 15 minutes, and that's it. We're done, you know, that sort of thing. So I think it's a good option to at least maintain, where in the past, I think we've done phone calls when we've had to, also for council members. So if we do have a council member that can't be in person, for them to be able to Zoom in and not have to miss the meeting, or not have to try to call in, which seems to have more technical issues sometimes than the Zoom side does, that we retain that option for council members that can't make it, potentially for consultants, things like that. But the flip side of that is, is there was conversation last meeting about maintaining Zoom for the public side. Now, you know, honestly, with our changes and how we've adjusted comments during meetings, really, the only time that Zoom is used as an interactive tool for the public that you can't find either by watching the River Channel or by watching the River Channel website, where it's also livestream, would be providing comments during a public hearing. You know, I think that's, you know, the only time, really, that there's an interactive piece of Zoom for the public is during public hearings. And I can, you know, I can see that go both ways, and that's a council decision. But keeping Zoom open just for all meetings, for all the time, is staff time-intensive. Brian has to be here for that. As we've seen in the past, interruptions happen. Zoom bombing is a thing that thankfully we haven't had occur, but easily could. And we need somebody constantly monitoring to make sure something that that does not happen. Where, you know, if they're, you know, so that's where we're at with the conversation. So I'm looking, staff is looking for council direction, what do you want to see happen moving forward?
Question from a legal standpoint, is there any decisions either way? Is there been any kind of legal precedence with Zoom meetings versus in-person?
No, not yet. And I think it's going to be interesting to see, because obviously, we're doing business differently now than we did a year and a half ago, right? So I think you're going to see some communities that tend to try to keep more of an electronic and virtual presence, particularly rural communities. But I also think that from an economic standpoint, Aaron brings up a really good point, which is you pay your consultants to drive in and maybe appear for one agenda item for a brief discussion with council, and then they drive back. And so I like it as a tool, then it just becomes a policy question or consideration for the council as to how do you want to use it beyond that tool? And, you know, how do you want people to interact with the council in the future?
I'd like to see it like you've stated it, optional, very thin optional, to our vendors that we would use, and then council people. But then only open it up for public hearings for the general public.
Right. So in that case, like tonight, we wouldn't have any Zoom, because we don't have a public hearing tonight. So there was, it would not be necessary. We don't have to have staff that has to, you know, worry about monitoring and things like that. And then on a future agenda where we have it, we would have a Zoom link for that public hearing portion. It would be, you know, our public hearings generally last about 10 minutes, for the most part. It would be, we'd have to have somebody, and I could even pay attention for 10 minutes during a public hearing, because I'm not talking during that part, and I can make sure nobody does anything bad. And we don't have to worry about having IT staff have to be in and things like that, so.
You know, I have heard from several individuals that they really have appreciated that opportunity to do public comment and be able to balance it with their work life and home life. And I'm someone that loves to, even if it's hard to hear sometimes, I certainly appreciate hearing people's opinions. So I would be really sad to see that go. And I'm wondering if the money we save from not having to have the consultants be here, if that would kind of net out the expense for Brian to be here.
And I think the thing is, is it's not, I tried to say in the memo, it's not a dollar for dollar, it's a time thing. We're paying Brian a certain amount of money to do a job, but we can't also expect Brian to be here all the time doing that job. And so the time that he's spent here at these meetings doing this means that he's not doing other IT work for the city. So that's, it's a time issue more than anything. And again, I think as we've tried to stress before, and we talked about a little bit last meeting with your question about that, if people want to provide public comment, not public hearing comment or statements, but public comments, like at the citizen comments at the beginning of the meeting, that citizen comment portion, if they can't be here in person, you know, what we've, you know, said before in the past is, here's how you email the entire council. You know, here's how you can provide your comment that way. And so, you know, citizen comments, I look at differently than comments during a posted public hearing. You know, I can see during a public hearing, I mean, that's a mandatory thing that we have to do for, you know, most zoning things and stuff like that, and making that easier for citizens to comment, too. I fully appreciate that part. Now, the citizen comment part is an optional agenda item that we offer, which I'm not saying it's not a beneficial one, but there are multiple ways to get those comments to the council that don't have to involve the Zoom participation part. And, you know, that's, but again, that's a council policy decision on what to do, and that's where my differentiation came from.
So is it different if, like, we're doing it for employees, and I affirm this, that they should be able to do that from home? So how is that different? Would Brian have to be here to manage that? Is that...
No, because we don't anticipate anybody's going to Zoom bomb one of our, one of our employees is probably not going to post something on their video that they should not be posting, or they're not, you know, intentionally. And they're not going to be interrupting the meeting. And so our monitoring is based on the fact of interruptions, the very, as you can ask our chamber, unfortunately, the very real Zoom bombing that can happen, you know, things like that. That's the big difference, is that if it's our consultants and our staff or our council members, we have faith that you're going to do the right thing, and we don't have to worry about monitoring you.
So the link is limited?
Very limited. Yep, the link would be shared. The link would only be shared with those that needed it. So like, if Paul can't make it to our next meeting, we'd give Paul a link to the Zoom.
And he'd participate that way. It's good, because I can't.
But it would be very limited. So that's the difference in the monitoring.
And the issue that's arisen there, and there have been some neighboring communities that have had Zoom bombing, and they're quite uncomfortable when you're on there, and it's happening, but is when you list that link on the agenda, then that link can be mined by those that are looking for open Zoom links to be able to interfere with. So the point here would simply be that you would just provide the link to your staff, and it wouldn't go out.
It would never be available to anyone but those that needed it. And they would be our, either our staff, our elected officials, or our paid consultants.
But at a public hearing, that would change, and then you would bring the IT person in just for that portion?
Actually, I think I'd monitor it. I can do a public hearing. I can't do a whole council meeting, because I'm participating. But if it's a public hearing, during the hearing portion, I can listen at the same time. I could watch it and cut something off if it goes bad. You know, that's easy, or anybody in the back of the room that's already here can do it. We don't have to have some special come in to do it.
I think from my perspective, that makes a lot of sense. I think that's a good balance with staff and public hearing, and also encouraging people to come out live for public comments and interact with their council people. So I think that's, we're kind of in this transition, right? So we're trying to figure out what's the best approach, but I like what you're saying.
Yeah. No, I tend to go the other way, in that I like as much opportunity for people to participate as they possibly can. And, you know, I'm not particularly in agreement with the people not being able to speak on issues when they're happening, because most people just don't plan ahead, and they all of a sudden realize what's going on, and says, oh, my gosh, and I've got to say something. So I appreciate that. And I did not think that was, in general, was not abused in our meetings, so. But that being, that's not what we're doing. I guess one, the first question to ask is, how many people were on Zoom? How many, when I was on it, I always took a look at participants and tried to identify. There was probably 10, 15, 20, maybe as high as 25 people, citizens. People who I couldn't identify who they were. They were not council members or staff.
At times, there were more than that.
Oh, there was times, someone, during some of those meetings, we maxed out.
That's right, that's right. I forgot about that.
We would have people that...
The people couldn't come live.
They would get bounced off. Right, they couldn't come live then, though.
And it was very difficult when we were here doing Zoom meetings.
So for example, tonight, I would say non-staff that are on this Zoom, six people on our Zoom that are not, that are citizens. I would say, well, one, I know that person is probably here for something else, a consultant sort of thing. Two, three, I would say there's three citizens and a reporter on here right now. Other than that, it's either somebody that's got council business as a consultant, not with us, but for somebody else, but they're a consultant. Or it's, you know, it's our council Zooms and like these things that you see. So there's basically three people on tonight.
I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation from city administrator that we go to what was presented and review in six months. So it would be staff, a very thinly, you know, and then public hearings. And then review it in six months. Because we all want the input, but I would encourage more people to come down here. It's a lot easier to face your accuser, if you will.
But it's a lot less comfortable to stand up there and speak than it is to sit at home and do that. So, and I think we need to make it easy. So I would not support that.
Yeah, I, I struggle to support that, too. We've heard from so many people how much it's helped them become engaged and better involved and balance, you know, their work lives and their kids, and I would, and I know you just put, was that an official motion? Okay, so I'm sorry. I would, do we have to get that seconded before we have more discussion, or am I okay to be talking?
I'll second it, we can have a.
Okay. So now I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. So I would wonder if we're even thinking of this, if, I feel like we at least have to give people notice that if we're going to make the transition, like, I, I don't feel good with all of a sudden next meeting not having this an option for people. So like a phase out, at least.
But, I mean, the only thing that really is changing is they're able to participate in citizen comments. That is the only thing that changes.
It, it could easily go out with, with the next agenda. People, people are, are coming to the meeting, either live or Zooming in based upon the agenda items. So if we post that with the agenda that, you know, this is, these are the parameters for Zoom meetings, I would think that that would be sufficient notice for the people that are paying attention to the meetings anyway.
And, and quite frankly, they have to take some personal responsibility if they want to get involved in the conversation down here.
I think they are.
They should be out there.
Randy, I, I don't agree with that, it's just.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, it's a standard that I can't accept.
That's too bad.
We have to make it easy for people to participate. You can't make them, get a babysitter, come down here.
You're trying to reinvent the wheel. It's been doing this for how many years, the way we used to?
Does that make it right?
Does it make it wrong?
Yeah, it could. Doing it that way forever?
No, it doesn't, Jim.
You know, if I, if I could wade into this, as Aaron pointed out, there are a lot of ways for people to participate right now. You know, if they want to watch the meeting, the meeting is on River Channel, it's on YouTube, they are recorded and shown again. If they want to make comments to us, we've all experienced that, we get phone calls, we get emails, we get text messages, we get all sorts of means of communication coming from the citizenry. And when you have citizen comments here, let's say it's on Zoom, we can't respond to them anyway. There's nothing that, that we can do, we can't respond to them, and the only difference is, now they're on TV. Is that, I mean, that's, that's the only difference, is now they get to air their concerns on TV very publicly as opposed to sending us their concerns. So is it that they're trying to tell us what their concerns are, or is it that they're trying to air them on TV so there's a different audience? So that's my take on it.
Just from my perspective, the reason why I seconded it is, we've been operating, the technology has existed for what's happened. We, we changed the technology, we changed the way that we did things because of COVID. That's in and out, in, in and of its own reason, right? And I know that businesses are looking at changing, but I don't see that change happening with, I, I like what, what Aaron put together here as a recommendation.
Yeah, I see that as the minimum, that's absolutely a very good way to, for us to do business. It really, it really makes sense, so we need to definitely keep that moving forward. The question is, how much are we going to, how much are we going to, more access we're going to allow the public to, to have, to be able to see it immediately? I'd love to see more participation, but I'm not winning that one, so.
Anybody else?
Well, I'm kind of torn between these two opposing views, and, you guys had some good arguments. What I'm wondering, Randy, is could we, could we do like a starting in July type of thing for this? Because I think that, I like what Sarah's saying about the, yeah, I just think we're still kind of in this gray zone and phasing, and so I, I guess I would, I like this as the long-term solution, but I also think we're, I think we should allow people at least a month to grapple with this and come down to City Hall, just, just for comfort. So what I'm wondering is if you would take a friendly amendment and just, like, starting in July?
Yeah.
First meeting in July?
That'd be the sixth.
Yeah.
First meeting in July?
Yeah, I mean, it's his, yeah, okay.
I agree with it.
I'd feel more comfortable with that, yeah.
All right, anybody else? So we got amended motion and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on city newsletter. Oh, by the way, the discussion possible action on use of city resources was, it was requested that that be continued. Joyce wanted to be here for that. Okay, so we're moving on to the next one. Discussion possible action on city newsletter.
So as I stated in there, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask one question? Would that be on the next agenda then?
Yeah.
Yep, just, it's basically that kind of table, but since it was brought up by the council member that can't be here tonight, it's kind of continued on, that's all.
Thank you.
And so for the city newsletter one, as I kind of said in the memo, Mayor O'Connor would like us to take a look at that, and, and doing that. I think, not to speak for you, but in our discussions, a quarterly newsletter was, was kind of the idea.
Yeah, so, you know, this is, this is just kind of a, in my opinion, a no-brainer. It's like, why haven't we been doing this? When we talk about communication with the people here in the city, you know, to, to be able to send something out to them with information coming each, from each of the departments on a somewhat regular basis, I think would be very, very important for our community.
Separate mailer?
And well overdue. We'll hold that until the next discussion, next meeting. But I think that quarterly, I, I'm not, I'm not wedded to a timeframe on this, how frequent? Every three months, is that too much? I mean, we're going to be asking our department heads to be giving us updates, anything less than that is the information outdated. But on the other hand, it's better than what we've been doing, right? So I'm thinking, maybe quarterly, maybe every three months, or four months, rather, instead of quarterly, perhaps. I wouldn't want to see it to anything less than semi-annual, but like I said, I'm, I'm not wedded to the frequency, except I just think that it should be done.
I think a quarterly newsletter is probably in order, four times a year.
We can do it. I mean, you know, don't make us do a monthly because we don't have, we don't have, you know, we don't have an information, you know, communications person. So it's going to be, you know, a combination of, you know, department heads and everybody kind of pulling things together, but, yeah, and if you want some examples without there, I think look at New Richmond and River Falls, what they're doing. I think they both actually do a fairly good job, very good job with theirs. And, you know, I think it's, it's something that we can definitely do, and we'll get, you know, our department heads will provide updates from, from their areas, and, you know, what other, other content you want, we're open. You know, I think just let the mayor know what you want to see in there, sort of thing, as far as content, and we can figure that out.
Yep.
All right, no, I think it's a good idea, and start it quarterly, and if there's a lot of, you know, just take the feedback and say, hey, or maybe we figure out, you know, this would be more timely ourselves if we did it on a monthly basis, smaller, shorter, whatever, we need to, we don't, we're, we're not communications experts, so we need that, need that support.
Yep.
Who would be putting this together?
You.
So right now, in optimistic anticipation of the outcome here tonight, I have brought on two interns. One who is a freshman in college and one who is, I believe, just graduated high school, asked for samples of their writing ability and stuff, and, and, and they wanted to get to understand city government. And what, what better way to kill two birds with one stone? They'll have the opportunity then to be meeting with the department heads, learn about each one of our departments, how they work, things that are going on, and, and then they would be putting that together. Now.
And city staff, city staff will review and, and make sure appropriateness and all that stuff, of course. So we'll sign off on it before it goes away. The mayor's obviously going to be able to see it, and, you know, we'll, you know, we're happy to share with everybody, you know, we want to make sure that the councils.
What I like about that is it's an opportunity for the uninformed or unbiased to talk about the city government from what they learned, from, I don't know anything about it, and then they have an opportunity to, to write about it in that, in that tone.
Yeah.
So, nice.
Yeah, I love it.
I think it's a good idea. Do we have any sense of funding? Do we have contingency funds, or do we know what this is going to?
Well, so it depends, if you want to mail it out to every, you know, kind of household, like the, if you want to do a paper one, especially maybe to start, to get it out to everybody, it probably costs us maybe $3,000 to mail it. You know, printing would be a little bit on top of that, but we actually, our printing is based on numbers and whatever, so I, I would think that 3,000-ish number to get it mailed to everyone would be about right. But then, you know, like, moving forward, I know that River Falls used to, I think, either mail it or include it in their utility bill sort of thing, they've moved to completely electronic, they use that, I'm sure you've all gotten before that MailChimp or whatever, it's a, it's a, it's basically like a program that you can buy that helps you organize newsletters electronically. So, you know, maybe the, maybe how we do it, you know, after the first one, is we start transitioning to those who want it electronically, you know, we can maybe have a sign up for it somehow, and then maybe half the people that would rather just get it electronically get it that way, then we only have to mail half, you know, I don't know, you know, but as far as the actual content creation and stuff, I'm not worried about like, a budget for staff time on that, we can, we can swing that.
And do you have a sense of when you'd like to have the first issue?
I'd like to have the first one out before these guys go back to school.
Yeah, okay.
So September, at the very latest.
If not sooner, I think the point would be is if the council signs off on this, we'll get them going on it and try to get a draft together as soon as we can.
Okay.
To get it out.
Do you need any sort of formal action?
Well, I think we need approval.
Yep, I think the council should approve it, and just, as far as the funding goes, you know, we'll kind of figure out a little bit internally what that would look like to get, especially that mailed first one out, but we definitely have funds even just within the city administrator budget, that we've got some flexibility with, that we wouldn't have to worry about pulling from anywhere else, so.
Gotcha. While we start this newsletter, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great.
Second?
We got motion and second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on a pre-annexation agreement between the city of Hudson, Wisconsin, and John Colleen Mark Endeavor Lockney, owners, and MI Homes Minneapolis LLC purchaser for an annexation proposal. Mike?
Good evening. This pre-annexation request pertains to the approximately 75, 76 acres immediately south of Rivercrest Elementary School. The council, Sarah, not so much you, but I think all of you have seen at least three of these in the past, what it does is it really kicks off the process. It doesn't bind us to saying, yes, we're going to annex something, no, we're not going to annex something, it might be a little bit less property, it won't be more, but it, it starts that planning process where we bring in our consulting engineers to work on the capital cost study, so we look at, you know, what type of utility improvements are going to need to happen out there, water, sewer, the big thing that we've dealt with in the past, obviously, is what type of improvements need to happen to the transportation system, so especially bicycle, pedestrian, and then obviously expansions to roads and intersections and, and things like that. The other things it does is we start working on the budget study, which talks about, okay, we assume, you know, what do you, in the concept you have there, there's 162 single-family lots, you know, what can we anticipate in terms of property tax revenue? What type of burden will that place on our police, fire, schools, what have you? Will we need more police officers, you know, more squads, you know, another fire truck, another boat?
More boats. We've got enough boats now.
So, you know, we kind of work through that, you know, with, with the, the current owners, and obviously the, the proposed developer, which is MI Homes in this case, they put down a deposit, which we received of $25,000, and that pays for our, our consultants to work through that process with us. Does that make sense? And again, I can go into a little bit more detail in the, the concepts they provided. One thing to always keep in mind, that what you have in front of you usually is almost, is very significantly different when we actually get to the point of annexation and zoning approvals and things like that. You know, we saw that with the Atwood property, we saw that in the Lee property, as we go through working, you know, with the neighborhood, with the community, with the developer, with the owners, all those things kind of, you know, come out as we go through our process, the study, the zoning, the plating, all of those things. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to, to answer.
Mike, do we know, I know it's very initial, but do we know anything about, and these are housing units that I'm seeing, right?
Yep, single-family lots.
Does that reduce the water rate?
They're small yards, Randy, the irrigation cost won't be too high.
So what they have, what they have shown now, just for, just a little context, you know, it's the same developer that did Carmichael Ridge, right? So the smaller lots would be similar to that Villa concept on the cul-de-sacs, like would be Hinsdale Circle and a few of the other ones out there, and then the other ones would be your more standard, single-family, you know, 60-foot wide type lots, not, not huge, but that's what that would look like. I would envision this to be a planned residential development, obviously, with those, you know, smaller lot sizes and a little bit, you know, more density. So, again, to be determined, you see some trail connections, all of those things, there's some, you know, some comments that staff has, you know, it would connect up to River Crest Trails, things like that, but again, we'll work through that.
I'll move, we approve the pre-annexation agreement.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, discussion?
Just one question, is this, and this is in line with our comp plan, I assume?
Yep, great question, yep, that was contemplated in the 2009 comp plan as an expansion area. Yep.
Thank you. I guess my only thought, it's more of a thought, is I would love to work towards something in the future with more worker housing for the city, and I don't know where that happens, but I, I don't know how much we are able to give input to the developer at some point, but it'd be nice if there was a piece of this that would be, you know, more affordable housing. But I don't know, I don't know what stage that happens, you know?
That's a longer, that's maybe down the road type.
That's going to be a down the road, we'll, we'll communicate that with the developer, I think, well, one of them's here, and I think John's online, too, but.
Yeah, there's one online, so.
Okay.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion possible action on approval of Second Street retaining wall plans and specifications and authorization to send out for bids.
Thank you.
Dean?
Good evening, council members, yes. Again, good to see all of you in person now. So again, this is just approving the retaining wall plans for the Second Street retaining wall. So we discussed previously, council meetings and authorization to sell out for bids, if there's any questions about the plans, I can certainly answer that, otherwise, looking for approval for the plans.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, discussion?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, don't apologize for questions.
When, so I'm, I'm really on board with all of this, when are you estimating you might come back with like an ongoing retaining wall policy then? Not that you haven't been busy.
That will be something that we're going to take up at Public Works Committee again, starting this month, and.
Okay.
See where that goes. So, yes, we'll be talking about more next week.
Okay.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion's approved, thanks, Dean.
Good work, Dean.
All right, the only thing, well, there are a couple of things I have here, I guess. First of all, I want to congratulate all of our graduates. It's been a tough year for all of them, feel bad for those that got caught in this late last, or, well, late last school year, the outset of COVID, and it's been a tough year for, for all of them, for our educational staff, as well as students, teachers, administrators, and I want to congratulate them on having persevered, making it through a very tough year, and we hope that things get better for you as you move on into your next iteration of what you're going to do with your life. And so, once again, congratulations on behalf of the city, hopefully speaking for all of them, I'm sure I'm speaking for all the council members here, and we wish you the very best of luck.[1746.62] wish you the very best of luck. Second is, I wanted to talk about our recognition as a dream city. I think everybody probably saw that. We're like ranked number 69, I believe, in the entire United States for cities our size. And it was recognition that we're all aware, well aware of. We know what a great city we live in. We know what a great community this is. It's a very welcoming community. It is a very inclusive committee, or, community. Our education, we're recognized for the education that we provide for the citizenry here in Hudson, as well as homeownership opportunities. And there is a variety of different things, categories, that we were listed and, and scored very highly. So, again, I think that it's well-deserved. It's something that this council and previous councils have worked hard to, I don't want to say achieved, because they probably didn't know that this was an award or recognition that was out there. But certainly, we have been recognized for the hard work that we've done here, and I want to congratulate the council for the, for the great work that you've done to make this the community that it is today, and all previous councils that came before all of us here, except for Randy.
I wasn't on TV.
Anyway, that's all I have. Anybody else?
I do have one on behalf of District Six, Joyce Hall's district constituent. I'd like to add that item to the next agenda.
Okay.
And I was thinking we were going to talk about a community relations officer position, and maybe a community liaison. I had thought we had-
Public, it's going to public safety, to get their recommendation.
It's going to public safety first, okay.
Public safety first, to get their recommendation back to council.
Okay.
So it will be coming.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I have an announcement. Many of you know it, but Mary and I have made the decision to move to Arizona on a permanent basis, full-time basis. And it's, we've been talking about this for quite some time. But things are happening on a rapid basis, and we're not sure. But I told the mayor yesterday, says, I won't be here January 1st. I guarantee that. So, and it could be sooner. It, it, today, I hear, I hear more information every day that says, it's probably going to be sooner than that. So I, as soon as we can pin something down, nail it down, and say, this is when we're, when we're gone, I'll let, I guess I'll let you know, Rich. And then, then the process starts on, on replacing me, or whatever. The council, as I recall, the council makes that decision. So, there we are.
Thank you for that. And while, we look forward to hearing more from you, but certainly we-
Take your time.
Yeah, and appreciate all you've done here, Jim, but that's probably a little premature, so.
I know you want to sell your house, but we'd love to have you here for a while.
Yeah, absolutely. I told him that yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah. House is on the market January 25th, or June 25th.
January's on the-
January, yes.
Blew that one.
All right. Anybody else? Motion?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody. You don't have to accept the offers when they come in on 25th.
Yes.
We're looking for a bit more.
You're going to get it.
You're going to get it. You will.
In that neighborhood, and-
We got one after, you know, a year and a half.